Welcome everyone. Today's date is August 11th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. So we'll go ahead and start the meeting. First is, I want to recognize the groups and individuals. And first of all, it's with great pleasure that we have someone that is a part of my administration, this administration, that has been honored the way he has been and known all across the United States. He was known that before being Chief of Police anyway. But he is, I'm glad he's my chief. I'm glad I reappointed him as Chief of Police for the City of Barstown. And that would be Chief McCubbins, which he's a 2015 Chief of the Year of the KACP. And I'd like to recognize him and stand up and give you a hand. I'd like to say that Rick is one of those gentlemen that he can talk to you like family. He can talk to you like a brother, as a policeman always say. But he's not the one that you want to come talk to when stuff is going to go bad. Because he, it can be bad. But if you're right, if you're an officer and you're right, he's behind you. But if you're wrong, it's bad. So, and I respect him for that. And I can stay up here all night saying things, other things, but I do appreciate your service. Especially under my administration, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to say this. It was a great thing to Barstown. Thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I want to thank Post 42, Peter Turzoff. He has, if anyone will notice, that 105 Alister will be missing for a while. He has gotten permission, I gave him permission to take that, take it to Fort Knox. They're going to come get it. They're going to repaint it, kind of work it over, and then they're going to grade back at no cost. So I want to thank that. I want to thank the people at Fort Knox, the soldiers, whoever over there is doing this work. And thank Post 42 and Peter Turzoff for getting this lined up. It was in repair, had a lot of surface rust, and I think that was needed. I do appreciate that. Okay, my screen went blank. Okay, next I'd like to, number two, I'd like to receive input from the public. Mr. Yelken?
Uh, just watching.
Regarding the letter that I gave, okay. I'm just here to represent the Maple Hill Association group. And we have been, we've had a neighborhood watch since 2013 as far as members. And what we're asking the City Council to look at tonight is to pay for the cost of having eight signs put on the streets that I have listed there on that letter. And the signs are $40.75 apiece. And Provo Phillips with the county would order those for us, but we would ask the city to cover the cost of that and also installing them and putting them up. You know, I think having a neighborhood watch helps not only us, but it helps the city. Because if that the citizens watching the neighborhood, then I think that's helping the neighborhood. So that's what we're asking the City to consider. So that's what I ask the council members to look at.
We'll discuss that later. And if your council members were member, several weeks ago, I brought this to your attention and give you, I can give you a couple of weeks here to think about it and see if you want to use contingency fund on that. So we'll get to that later down in the agenda. Anyone else? Yes ma'am? Ms. Margaret Sims?
First of all, what I'm going to address, I did my investigating about it, and I find that it actually started before the current mayor came into office. I'm really sorry, Mr. Mayor, you'd have to clean up messes like this one.
You won't be the first one.
I received a letter a few weeks ago telling us that our address had changed at Windsor Gardens. Tried calling the city, was referred to the county, to a lady named Debbie Carter. Tried calling her numerous times, finally was told when talked to her, city had taken care of this. And she gave me the names of three people that did it. Larry Hamilton, Larry Green, Josh Kemp. All city employees. Now, my issue, we were never consulted about any possible address change. We knew nothing was going on until we get a letter. One thing Ms. Carter did tell me that there had been address changes in the county, and they had gotten with the residents ahead of time to tell them what was going on. Now, there are 16 residences in our senior neighborhood. I believe we should have been allowed to come together with the powers that be and discuss what needed to be done. So many things need address changes. Your bank, your creditors, your newspapers, what about our deeds? Now, our letter stated that the addresses are usable now, but the street sign's not changed. Now, what if we need an ambulance? Are they going to find us? Or will there be a delay in response? If there's a fire, chances are the fireman will see the smoke and find us at some point. But what happens when we turn it into our insurance company? And the fire happened in one address, and our insurance policy states we have insurance at another address? What about the maps in the town? Are there going to be new maps produced showing our new street name at an additional cost to somebody? And the name of our street, we didn't have any input into that, our new name. I'd like to ask that the city have more open lines of communication with residents affected by such changes. I'd also like to ask the City Council to allow our homeowners association to come up with the name of our street. We may be seniors, but we deserve to be contacted about changes, not taken for granted. One thing about it, we do vote, and we will remember how we're going to be treated. And just put this in perspective, when you get older and somebody's sitting up there a little bit older than I am, do you want to be treated the way the residents in our neighborhood are treated? Thank you.
In that regard, you are correct. It did happen in another administration, and things like that has happened. But in this administration, I can tell the citizens of Barstown, I think each neighborhood should be consulted in naming their street because maybe they don't like that name that was given or what it changed to. And myself and Larry Hamilton had discussed that, and they, you should have been consulted. But we can't do nothing about that. That was in the past, and we're here now. But that will be rectified in this administration, okay?
May I have a question? How are you getting mail?
It's still addressed to Isaac Greer Court.
But the mail person knows you're bringing it here.
The mail's coming to, mail address to Isaac Greer Court. But I am told by my letter that was dated back in May that we didn't get until the end of June, that my new address is Floyd Court.
I want to change it. Why would they change it, start with? What does it mean for the change? That was under the E-911 addressing. And under that, the new, and Debbie may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think under that, new E-911 thing, every road, every alley, everything that has any residence has to have an address for like a fire gate number or something like that addressed to it. And some of those, some of those, like where she lives at the present time, it was all Isaac Greer Court, which went back in Windsor Gardens, even the town homes that sit behind it, it was all Isaac Greer Court. And you can't have that. Isaac Greer Court goes to Windsor Gardens, and then you have these other streets, and they all had to be renamed.
I don't think it was City of Barstown. I did some, let me revert back to the past administration. It wasn't the past administration. It was someone else was in charge of this 911 that changed the name. I don't think the city had no input at all in the change in the name, Martin. That came from that committee from the 911. I can't recall who did it, but I don't think the city had no kind of input on changing that name.
Did the board do it, or who renamed that?
The city streets were renamed by the city.
Named by the city?
The city streets, yes. There were two streets in the city. My understanding from Josh was Larry Hamilton, Larry Green's like the most street names. I had no input into that.
And then the mayor has to sign off on those streets?
Well, the mayor did, yes. You did, and then, yes.
I didn't. No, I did not. The previous interview.
I've never heard of this, and I would 100% agree that whoever changed the name owed it to the people or had their address changed. Tell them, and I would tell you point blank, I guess today is the first time I've heard it, and to hear you say I had something to do with it is preposterous.
Well, you may want to tell whoever told me that. I'm just relaying the information.
Appreciate.
I can tell you on the county side, we had responders that had gone out and either met with people, like I said, either met with people that were home to get their address, to get their name, to get their phone number. If they weren't there, we left a door hanger. We asked them to call 911, which was me, and then we would discuss a name, come up with something that we could hopefully agree on, and then the process started. How those names were selected in the city, I have no idea. Was Larry, did Larry Green like know, or you can call Josh?
Yeah, Josh gave me a map, a series of maps of about 15 or so streets that we didn't, if I understand it right, they didn't have names. And, or they were, or they had, like there was one on, off of Cathedral Manor. It was a street that came off of Cathedral Manor and went behind some other houses to a subdivision, and those houses had Cathedral Manor name, addresses. So he said, well, no, you can't have a street that is not Cathedral Manor because for E-911 addressing purposes, if it's a separate street, it has to have a separate name. And so he gave me this pile of maps, about 15 of them, I think, and alleys. We had to name all the alleys, which didn't have names. And some of these streets didn't. So he gave those to me. I made up some names, gave them to the mayor. The mayor said those are, well, he changed a few, and he said they're okay. I gave you Josh, and returned them.
There you go.
That's how it happened.
I think that street name has to come before the City Council, myself. I could be wrong. This is a word I heard about today, and I don't think it's been announced at all.
Well, under this administration, it will be, the citizens will be notified, and then it will come before the City Council to get their opinion, and the citizens should have that, so.
If Mr. Hamilton is correct, that the names should have come before the City Council, and they did not come before the City Council, then can we get the names possibly changed?
We'll have to look into that. I think there's a reason that they changed the names for what Larry is saying.
That's fine, but the actual name given.
But I don't, I think that more work should be done to pick the name and hope that it was a name that everybody liked, and then we could rein the council, and there wouldn't be anybody, there would be no firm line over it.
Well, I have the copy of the names that were changed, and I mean, some of these people on Temple, and now they live on Bison Lane. I'm sure they're going to appreciate that. On Hallstead, they live on Campbell Alley. On East O'Brien, they live on Langford Drive. One place on New Shepherdsville Road is now Generals Boulevard. I taught typing. That doesn't, that looks like a typographical error. But anyhow, but Bison Lane, I mean Floyd Court.
Let us, let us look into that. I'll get Mr. Butler to look into it, and I'll let us research it, and then I'll get back with you.
Thank you.
All right, next, anyone else that you want to speak?
I would like to speak. I would like to respectfully.
Could we have your name?
Oh, I'm Wilma Sorrell, and I actually do not live in the city, but I work in the city. I'm a county resident. And first of all, congratulations to the chief. He's a wonderful city police chief for all the people in the county. So anyway, I want to move farther from that, move away from that, about the occupational tax. This really is very important to me because I do work in the city. I think of Barstown as my own. It's my home. And with that being said, my own, I don't want any more tax raises, tax increases whatsoever. And I do appreciate Mayor Royalty's position on increasing the fire department and their sustainability and the safety of the citizens. Because I was in a house fire when I was 10 years old. My house burnt down. So I can understand that. 10 years old, lost mom, my parents lost their home to a house fire. So I understand that. It's needed. But let's not just take it from one place. Let's take it from multiple places. Let's look at this farther. If you had to divide the county and the city fire department, so be it. Let's move on. But let's move on and make it the best for everyone. Don't just hurt where 80% of the people work in the city, but they live in the county. Let's not just hurt that sector. Let's make it a fair, equitable solution across the board, and let's look at all the options besides saying we're going to give a 1.2% increase to the occupational tax. I looked at my paycheck, and Mayor Royalty and I had some discussion on this on a private message on Facebook, because anyone that knows me knows that I do not put anything negative on Facebook. I think you've been my Facebook friend for years, and I don't believe in doing that. So I sent him a private message, and we had a little heated discussion. Heat discussion is good. These children are here, and they need to learn how you come and fight for your rights. So in doing that, an equitable division, I agree, you've got to have fire protection. You've got to do what it takes, but don't do what it takes in hurting one group. Please don't do that to one group. Because what's it going to be next time? It's going to be even more. What are you going to need next time for the occupational tax? The taxpayers who pay the majority of the bills coming into the city. You know, that's coming out of my paycheck. But I walk the streets of Barstown. I do my walking in town. A lot of you all probably see me walking almost every night. I have no problem paying my fair share. My home, I go to the tax office every year, insurance company every year, pay my home taxes. They're like, you guys are the only, I'm the only ones that ever pay yours before November 1st. Because we believe in paying our fair share. We pay it without argument. We work hard to pay our taxes. You know, that's what we do. And I don't want to work harder and be treated unfairly. And so I'm asking you respectfully to look at doing an equitable division and pulling it from all places. I brought this, and I think Larry Green has a copy that he used on the radio today. But please look at utilizing this. Where else can you pull it from instead of just pulling 1.25% more from the occupational tax? I was looking at my paycheck, and I have, I paid $75 half in county occupational taxes. As of right now, today, last paycheck, I was $200 to the city. Do you all see that that's fair? I don't think that's fair. You want to talk about what's fair? I will pay you, I will make, I'm the first one. My house burnt down when I was 10 years old. I'll be the first one to say, I don't want anyone in this room, or in this county, or in this city, go through the same thing that I went through at 10 years old. But let's do it fairly. Let's pull it out where you can get it, not just from one spot, but let's take it evenly across the board. And, you know, we all can give a little bit.
We have a time limit.
I'm good. I'm finished. Thank you all for listening to me.
So is that a done deal, or is it up for debate? Is it done deal, decided how it's going down, or it's still up for debate in the future?
No, ma'am. No, that's what we're going to debate on, and there's not been a 1.25 increase on it. There has not been any increase. There is a wide range of ideas. The council, Fred Hagan is going to have a presentation. The council has a broad range of ideas that they can impose, and they can vote on. And the council will vote on this here in the near future as soon as the finance committee and the council decide what they want to do. That's what's going to happen. But there's nothing been decided at this point.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, fair enough. Yes, ma'am?
I understand that it's been decided.
We do need to know who you are.
My name's Sharon Lamb.
And I'm sorry to catch your.
Susan Gilmanetti.
Thank you. And I'm sorry.
I don't work in the city. I live in the county, so I really don't have a dog in this, except friends and relatives. I know nothing's been decided, but will there be, after Mr. Hagan presents his alternative, I listened to Mr. Green's, and I'm assuming Mr. Hagan's will be on Nelson County does it as well. Will there be an opportunity for county residents to voice their opinions before the council votes on what they ultimately are going to do? Because I understand the City Council has the final say, because they'll be doing the voting. But will the county residents have an open forum or something where they'd be able to talk to you and ask you questions?
Just in council, just like it is right now, that is, this is the setting. And our real states, if you, if you talk, you've got three minutes, and that is it. But just at a setting like this, we're not going to have a public, this is a public forum, but we're not going to have a public debate over it, no.
But it will be posted in the agenda? Okay.
Anyone else?
I just want to say something on a humorous note. Mr. Green, I applied for a city job. I'm glad they paid the taxes. You need to hire me. My name is Susan Gilmanetti. I'm just joking, I'm sorry. I'll pay you.
That is. Okay.
You have to.
Let's go to number three. Bids, contracts, proposals, and service requests. Do you have anything on that? No HRB and DRB or planning zoning recommendations? Correspondence? So let's review the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of 7, 28, 2015. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve these minutes of July of 28, 2015. Okay? And if there's no objections, I will, the motion is to approve the minutes, and is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. Let's go to the financial report and receive the individual councilmen's suggestions for the 2015-16 financial budget. Review the options and develop consensus. Councilman Fred Hagan, go forward.
Well, Mayor, since I put this on the agenda, if the council doesn't mind, I'm going to kind of chair this discussion on our options for the finance, for the budget. There being no objection, I'm going to continue.
Do we need the light bulb?
No, why? Time, time, time. Just, oh, I'll take it. Just to begin at the beginning, you know, we, the current budget, we've all seen how it's funded. It has a million plus out of utility transfer. There's $740,000 out of reserves. And personally, I think a lot of us agree with this. The utility transfer, last year it was 600,000, the year before it was 500,000, and it's been 500,000 for many years. This year it's 1.65,000. And I just think it's intricate. We need to understand that utility transfer, it comes from the fund, the fees people pay for maybe the electric utilities. And those, the subdivisions in the city that receive electricity from the city are Maple Hill, Wellington, Mostel Wellington, Hurstland, Salem Hills, Camelot, Henry Town, Edgewood, Urban Downs, Holly Hills, Rogans, Trail Court, Old Fairgrounds area, and Wilson Industrial Park. Those citizens pay their electricity to the city, and then those funds are used to fund the general fund. The cities, the neighborhoods in the cities that don't get their electricity from the city are Garden Park, Spring Hill, Cottage Grove, Miller Springs, Beach Forest State, Oakwood, Tolmore, Early Times, Greystone, Keystone, Granite Drive, Sunset Drive, Elm Crest Drive, Raylinsa Boulevard, Old Kentucky Home Light Industrial Park, which is Banjo Street, Nelson County Industrial Park. So when we transferred this $600,000 last year and the $1 million this year from the electric utility reserves to the general fund, the people who live in those first neighborhoods are paying that, and the people who live in these other neighborhoods don't. So essentially, it's about 67% of the citizens are paying that $1 million tax, and 33% are not. I just, I think that's wrong. I've always thought we do not need the fund, or general fund from the electric fund. So I propose that we look at these other revenue streams and do away with that, and we'll talk about those options. The other fund we have is the $740,000 from reserves, which is essentially half of our reserves. It's about $1.5 million in our general fund as of the end of the fiscal year. And we would be using half of that if we kept the budget the way it is, and that's clearly not sustainable. We can't use our, eat the seed corn, and then two years after we gone. That money needs to be set aside for emergencies, unforeseen events, and so forth. Auditors have told us that every year. We need to keep that, set aside for that. So last time we were here, we had some ideas on, there are different options, property tax, occupational tax, utility tax, insurance premium, and then this indirect cost. So what I've done, with Tracy's help and Jeff's help, I've put this spreadsheet together. We're just going to look at it up here and look at some of our different options. Larry Green's laid out several different options, but there are infinite number of ways we can play with that. And what I'd like to do is just kind of revisit my ideas, and then the other councilmen can have your shot at it. And we can change the things right online, or right real time, and see how it affects the bottom line. And I think it would, it's easier for me rather than talking about it, we can see it. So let's give that a whirl. Okay, this is the, this is what we looked at last week. And I hope this isn't too complicated. It's basically at the top, we have whatever the revenue increases or decreases might be, whatever we might think they should be. Down here is the resulting revenue stream. This is simply what Larry Green has done for us before. Here's the current budget, and here's how the budget would be affected as we change these inputs up here. This is basically what I had last time. I, a 4% increase in property tax, a 0.25% increase in the occupational tax, 2% utility tax, 2% insurance premium. If we enacted those, had reduced our indirect cost by $200,000, which basically means we transferred $200,000 less out of the electric utility, leave it in the utility fund, and make that up in one of these other funds. If we do that, you see the property tax is 4%, the occupational tax would be 0.75, there's a 2% utility tax, 2% insurance premium. Voila. What happens is, essentially, the reserve, we'd be using $25,000 from the reserve, utility tax, utility transfer would be, would be equal to whatever our utility tax is. I thought if we do have a utility tax, we should keep some utility transfers. That would go from $1 million to $155,000. So basically, you can play with this any way. You can take the property tax away, you can increase the occupational tax, you can take the utility tax away. But I thought, there's two ways of looking at this. Our, our. Our, 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 our property tax is, is one of the lowest in the state. Our occupational tax is definitely the lowest in the state, even if we increased it to .75, it would still be the lowest in the state. Most cities have an insurance premium, we don't have an insurance premium. So if we wanted to draw from all of the areas, which, this is what I was talking about last time, you can kind of do this. Go ahead, property tax is lowest at 2001. You can do the property tax, take out some indirect costs, slightly increase the occupational tax, put some utility tax, do an insurance premium. It essentially balances the budget. That's, that's one way of looking at it. The other way of looking at it is this, if we do this, the burden of this increase falls mainly on the citizens, because the citizens are the ones paying the insurance premium, the citizens are the ones paying the utility tax, so they pick up, and they're already paying the occupational tax, of course. So the other way to do this is to, go ahead Tracy, is, is take the, take the, uh, yeah, take that zero, and then, like we did before. You got that zero, make the 2 cent zero, then make that a point, point oh, point five. Whoops, you got it. There we go.
There we go.
And, uh, no more.
There we go.
And, uh-
Zero.
And then, you know, we, we get it. Okay. So if, if we go, if we go up, if we take a half percent on the occupational tax, and don't have any utility tax, no insurance premium, leave the property tax where it is, we end up at a $275,000 surplus in this current budget. So that's kind of the, the, the two extremes. So what I did, and you can play with this .5% occupational tax, and if you make it like .43, it essentially, it essentially will balance the, the budget. Do, do that, just, just for me to translate.
Point four, David?
Yeah. So, there, there's another option. Make the, make, take the cap off, make the occupational tax .93%, and you essentially balance the budget. We have to understand, the projection on taking the cap off is a guess, I mean, that, we don't know what that's gonna be, I mean, that's, that, that's a guess. So, we don't be thinking we can really fine tune this, this, this as much. So to me, that's kind of the options, just raise the occupational tax enough to balance the budget, or take the property tax increase of, uh, of 4%, and we had some papers today that show the same, or so, would, would be. And I, I guess my, I, I still think it would be, would be, I, I would take the 4% on the property tax, and, uh, then, go ahead and do that, Tracy. And then I think you make it like .4, that's, uh, so you make, uh, make, make that about .9%. Again, that, we're, we're, we're using some of it in the reserve, but again, that's, there's 1.5 million in the reserve, that doesn't bother me that much. Plus, all this isn't gonna come in the first year, because the, the occupational tax doesn't take effect till the first year, so it's only half of the fiscal year, so... So, to me, that's kind of a, a nice balance right there. So I, I kind of, I'm gonna stop talking and see if any of the other councilmen have any other suggestions on how we can adjust, I mean, here, here's, here's our inputs right here, that's what we have to work with.
What I, what I like to see, if you, you know, take the, leave the property taxes, is, so it'd be, it'd be a zero, I would take the occupational taxes the council has suggested, go to 1%.
The council hadn't suggested that.
Not suggested, but talked about.
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility, they talked about it, unless you were at a different meeting, but-
Okay.
They had suggested 1%. So, and then you-
No, no, make that .5.
Yeah, 1.5.
Councilman?
But, uh, what I, you asked a question on your chart here.
No, what, what do you think we ought to do?
Well, I think we ought to change that 50 to 70, uh, 75, uh- .25.
You want that to be .75?
That was, that was staying, that was staying there.
And then, so then, and then what else?
Eliminate the, the insurance tax. Eliminate the insurance tax, eliminate the utility tax, and you turn around, and you wound up, when we started this budget, we talked about the cost of the fire department. Now, the cost of the fire department at that time was, uh, I think, my, my memory may be a little off, but I think it was 100,000 plus 100,000 something thousand, which amounted to a million one or a million two. And if you, if you raised the, the, the occupational tax, uh, you will, uh, raise, I think it's a million one extra.
950, it'd be 950,000, if you-
You want, Fred?
Well, it would be 950,000, here it is right here.
Well, we're drawing in, uh, well, I'm looking at these charts over here, but go ahead.
No.
But that's all I wanna, that's all, that's all I, I wanna change. We just add the-
So, so we've still got this 770,000 dollar deficit?
Well, we've used the, uh, the, uh, revenue from all of these utilities for every year that I've been on the council. And I've always, every budget, everybody comes up, we can't do that, we can't do that, we can't do that. What are you gonna do with the money? What are you gonna do with it if, if, if you don't use it yet? It's one of the, we're in business, and it makes money, why don't you use it for?
Well, my, my personal opinion is, what, what, if you just leave it in the utility fund, and either use it for utility funds or lower rates.
But, but, uh-
And as I said in the last meeting-
Well, we, you know, we, we, we took the cap off, it was 15,000, and, uh, it brought us in 800,000 dollars. Supposedly, that was a number we'd given. Now, uh, the next year, we were gonna, uh, look at doing something different. Well, that 800,000 dollars is mangled into this budget now.
Right.
Now, uh, it was brought up then, I don't know whether it was brought up last year or we brought it up for this year, but it was brought up about maybe cutting electric rates. But that went nowhere. Instead, we wanted to raise the budget more. Now, granted, I oppose the fire department, when I voted on this budget, the main reason I voted for this budget, knowing that we were gonna have this night right here. Now, uh, we gotta pay for it. And I think we can pay for it with that, my, my number is a little different, but your 950,000. We'll pay for this fire department, and that's all we've added to this budget.
So, so, so you're, you're still on the take it out of the utility?
I'm pretty taken out of the utility.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still gonna reinforce that we go to 1.25 on the occupational tax, and eliminate all the other taxes, but once you get them implemented, then-
Put that in there.
If you can get other, the other taxes implemented, then we'll, we'll keep working off.
So Bill, if, if we do a 1.25, we're gonna have a 1.3 million dollar surplus.
Okay. We got sidewalks, we got all kinds of stuff we can do for the public.
I'd like to make a comment.
I'd like to take the cap off also.
Well, yeah, this, this all, this all includes the cap even, that, that's on this-
You don't want any property taxes, and I think the school taxes eat for something up to that as this, not the property tax.
So if, if we, if we pass this, we have a current budget, so at the end of the year, we wouldn't, well, it's all we had the first year, but we'd have a 1.3 million dollar surplus from our current budget. So, just so-
Well, in that, in that, like, like the chart, we reduced the, uh, the property tax with that. When we, when it went to 1.25, we reduced the property tax by 18 cents to 10.
Did you wanna do that, Bill?
Yes.
How much?
I'm, I'm still with the chart date.
Well, what's, what's his number, what, what's his number of you? What do we need there, do you say?
What's the absolute number we're about?
Well, he's talking, we're talking, if you have, if you have the surplus here, do we, can, can we go in and lower either, uh, uh, property taxes, or can we lower utility rates?
Said property taxes go from 18.2 to 1, uh, 10.0.
That'd be good.
These property taxes, I'm paying city, county, both the property taxes. I'm paying city and county school taxes, they're, I mean, yeah, somebody tell him, yes.
And what the council, I think everybody knows, is we not only pay city taxes, but we pay county taxes also, on, on the same, same property. I mean, we're getting, we're getting it twice.
Just a zero in there, that, that's okay. What, what is accepted, Bill, what you'd like to do is go to 1.25 and just reduce the, the property tax, such that we all end up with this big surplus.
Yes, okay.
Somebody else have a?
Mr. Liddy.
Fred, Councilman Liddy?
I just, I'm gonna make a comment once he concludes his, uh, whatever he's doing, I think. I'd just like to make a comment to the council.
Okay.
Once he, once he completed.
All right.
Yeah, you, uh, you mentioned lowering utility, utility rate, um, that sounds good, but, uh, I wouldn't recommend that because-
But that doesn't affect his budget either?
No, I'm just, just making a comment, okay? I wouldn't recommend that. In lieu of that, I would give a rebate to customers, okay? So I just, uh, and then also too, on the insurance premium tax, is that based on where you purchased the policy, or where the, the reside of the person? Or is where you live? And as far as, I'm more in line with, uh, Bobby's position, so, just for that.
Of using the utility?
Yes, so.
.75 and using the utility? Casey, do you have any thoughts?
Um, in reference to the 1.25 that, that Pat charted, so, we're going to supposedly put a 1.25 occupational tax, and then lower the property tax rate?
That's the, that's the suggestion, yes. I'm not, I'm not a fan of that, but that's the suggestion.
I just don't think that, um, I don't think that looks good.
But you gotta, you gotta understand, if you, if you, if you go 1.25, and then you have this surplus of money, why is it, why is it not fair? If you, if, if you council members choose to do 1.25, or, uh, 1%, whatever, whatever it is that bears a surplus, you know, there's two things you have to look at, if there is, uh, we, can you give, can you not give it back to the public? Can you not give it back to the citizens of Barstown? And then you can do it either by in way of, of, uh, utilities, you can, uh, give a rebate, or you can lower your property taxes, or you can say, can we give it back to the, to the citizens of Barstown when they walk down these sidewalks, or drive on these streets, that we can, uh, maintain our sidewalks? We've got, I'll, we'll be walking Thursday to take pictures of sidewalks, myself and Mr. Ashworth. So, and if you do that, can we, can we say, okay, now we're gonna, we're going to replace these sidewalks, we're gonna, uh, block off these streets, and get back from this, what is it, a 20-year plan, or a 15-year plan? That, that we are so far behind now, that it's, it's gonna be difficult to keep up, so, why can't we do that?
Well, I mean, I understand about taking care of sidewalks and things of that nature, but we have a budget, so, I, I think number one, we should look at, well, why weren't they taken care of? You know, why, why weren't the sidewalks taken care of? There, there's a budget, so why weren't they taken care of? So, I, I just don't think that lowering the property tax would be feasible. I mean, you know, I, I know a lot of people own property, but that just doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Sidewalks, the streets are budgeted, but they have, they, they are just a small portion of the budget, and you have to understand that, that we just can't go and say there's, uh, 300,000 dollars of sidewalks that need to be done, and you put that money into budget. That's where you're gonna get it from. The only place you get that from is, is what Councilman Hagan has up here, you can go to occupational taxes, or, or, uh, some other big thing, something on the chart. And they have them, but, you know, I've been on this council for 15 years, almost as long as Bobby, not quite as long as Francis, but there is a budget, there's a line item for that, and they budget so much each year for that, and there's just not enough to go around to do everything that's needed.
Okay, but, I, I understand what you're saying, but once again, we're talking about a surplus of money, and taking care of sidewalks and things of that nature, that are already budgeted in a budget, and it, it just-
Keisha, do you have, do you have a suggested mix that, that, uh?
Well, definitely not the, uh, utility or insurance tax. Are you saying that for an insurance tax, um, is that just city people, or?
Yes, yes.
It's just city, okay. Um, so-
Uh, most cities have, uh, uh, out of the 60 largest cities in the state, three don't have it.
I, I totally understand the scheme of everything, I know that we are the lowest in the state, I, I know that. Um, but for us to have to come together and put a tax out, um, for the citizens, I mean, I, I'm thinking of our, our city citizens, but I'm also thinking about the people that come into town and work.
So what do you think? But those people that come out of town to work, there's about, Larry? How many, how many, what's the percentage that comes out of town, Mr. Casey? Who lives outside the city or outside the county?
12% in the city, uh, 30-some percent from, um, outside the city but inside the county, and then 45% outside of county. There's actually more from outside the county than any other group.
So that's, that's the group that comes in. And, you know, again, and give back to the budget, if you budget, you can't, you know, you, uh, I don't know how, I don't know how else to explain it on the, on the sidewalk, it's just, I, I wish that you could say, we're gonna, we're gonna fix every sidewalk in Barstown and budget the money for it, but that's not how it works. Uh, maybe that might get it across to you, but you got it.
No, 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 no.
You have that mind locking button.
No, I'm not, I, I totally understand what you're saying, I just hate for us to have a huge surplus like that.
Keisha, back to you, back to you, if you can. What, what, do you have a suggestive scenario here of mixing?
Well, I mean, the, the, I, I would hate to have any type of tax, but definitely I wouldn't do a 1.25 tax, and, um, the, uh-
How about a, how about a?
1% without, um,
Well, there, there, there's, there's 1% with no cap. No utility tax, no insurance premium, no property tax increase.
And that gives us a-
That gives us a surplus of 275,000 dollars.
And, and if you choose, if you choose a point, uh, uh, 75, do you have that surplus? Uh, no.
Let, let me ask this question, just to kind of narrow this down, is there any councilman who thinks we should have a utility tax? Can you take that as a, is there any councilman that thinks we should have an insurance premium tax?
I don't think it's supposed to have no tax.
Okay, so that, that takes those two down. That leaves us property tax. Can we have some water? That leaves us property tax and the occupational tax. So then it's a, it, to me, then it's a matter of, I, I think we're, we're narrowing this down to, are we gonna have a 1.25, are we gonna have a .25, are we gonna have a .5%? And I don't know that we're going to settle that in this meeting, but it, to me, it, at least we've looked at these other ones. It appears we've thrown those out, we're gonna look at occupational tax, and some property tax, either an increase or a decrease, maybe. So I, I would suggest, unless somebody wants to keep talking, that we can think about how much occupational tax we, we think we ought to do, and we can come back and, and do that at the next meeting, unless somebody else wants, unless somebody else wants to keep talking.
Well, I think by consensus, we've got it narrowed down. It's pretty much occupational tax.
No, we haven't got no consensus, Mayor. How you calculate that?
Well, I think.
You have, I got no consensus.
So what we've got to do at this point is decide, is it, you know, from one point two five or point seven five, whatever.
Mayor, I want to, you do not have a consensus. You do not have thought of consensus before the council.
Okay, Councilman Liddy.
Okay.
All right. You're out of order. That's it. Thank you. So now that consensus is there, and what we need to do is we need to discuss it even further.
I'll say that's at the next meeting.
Got it.
Thanks, Mr. Liddy.
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to make my comment. Related to this budget. I'd like to make a comment related to this budget.
Go ahead, Councilman Liddy.
My opinion has not changed from day one. I am not going to flip-flop. I am against all taxes increasing. City of Bardstown has six combined utility resources, revenue resources, fifty million dollars. No other small city like Bardstown in Kentucky, a population of twelve or thirteen thousand, has six combined utility revenue resources. Shepherdville, Shepherdville. A lot of those cities that Larry did a study of research, those cities did not have those six combines utility resources, the reason why they had all those taxes. Cities should not have to increase property tax. Now, I have done my math, my friend. In the last three or four years, city has transferred less money out of combined utility than for many years. And I did my math. Also, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about four hundred thousand dollars per year. And I think it was about four years, I calculated about four years, it was just about a million or something. And we just took about a million or something out in one year. When a business is running red, the first thing a business do is cut back. They do not put the cart before the horse. I'll go jump in the deepest part of the lake. The past administration was criticized trying to increase property tax. Many families in this city are struggling to make ends meet. We have small businesses struggling. Schoolchildren, they have a side job, trying to save money to go to school, buy a book or something, buy some clothes. And those few dollars means a lot to schoolchildren. This city is supposed to be the most beautiful small town in America to live in. This city is going to run everybody out of city of Bardstown. Thank you.
You have comments for many other councilmembers? Let's move on. Just moving to number eight, ordinances. First reading.
Mayor, I would like to introduce proposed ordinances B, two thousand and fifteen, rezoned number twenty-four forty-one, Betty Ray Allen, and B, two thousand and fifteen, rezoned twenty-four forty-two, Norman and Yocum, and ask whether some are to be read.
B, two thousand and fifteen, rezoned number two four four one, Betty Ray Allen, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning map entitled, zoning map cities of Bardstown, Blingfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating zero point one seven two acre at eight fifteen West Stephen Foster Avenue, lots number eighteen and nineteen, block C, Kennett addition number two, from B three, regional retail business district, to R one C, single-family residential district. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Located in Kennett Court number two, block C, in Bardstown, Nelson County, Kentucky, being all of lots number eighteen and nineteen, together with ten feet off the front line on the east side of lot number twenty, running thence to original south corner lots, between lots number nineteen and twenty. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, city attorney. Ordinance B, two thousand and fifteen, rezoned number two four four two, Newman and Yocum, and ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning map entitled, zoning map cities of Bardstown, Blingfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating zero point one seven two acre at eight thirteen West Stephen Foster Avenue, lots number sixteen and seventeen, block C, Kennett addition number two, from B three, regional retail business district, to R one C, single-family residential district. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Being lots number sixteen and seventeen and block C of Kennett addition number two, as shown by plat of said addition recorded in deed book one sixteen, page one sixty-two in the Nelson County Court Clerk's office. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, city attorney.
Okay, we don't have any second readings. Number nine, which is reports of staff and committees. Street and Solid Waste Committee, it's made on eight eleven, two thousand and fifteen. Councilman Buckman, you have the floor, sir.
We had a meeting prior to this meeting, and all the committee was present. We tabled the recycling label enable again with a GUP opportunity center and recycling discussion, so it was tabled to the next meeting. Next on agenda was the lighting of the Maple Hill area, proposed lighting. Mostly was discussed in. Mostly discussed was the lighting of the corridor, the main thoroughfare going into Maple Hill from out of the city, coming into the city. He showed a plat of all the lighting, and pretty much overall, the lighting was sufficient, but it was old lighting, and he explained that the upgrade would be expensive and had to be a long term. But to get the project started, the initial lighting of the corridor, which I think is the primary concern of the residents in that area, on the right side coming in, going east on sixty-two coming in, the upgrade to the better lighting that would brighten it up. And then on the left side, Jeff introduced a decorative type, more traditional pole, like a historical looking lighting that would light up the thoroughfare coming into Bardstown and give the residents the lighting that they wanted. Jeff, may you be able to reiterate that on it?
Yeah, you know, the mayor asked, I guess after some meetings with some of the council with the folks from Maple Hill. And, you know, we did an inventory of the lighting that's out there. You know, neighborhood-wide. You know, I used to live on eight twenty-six Johnson Street, so I'm pretty familiar with the neighborhood. And a lot of them are the old style barn lights. We're talking about replacing them with a more modern overhead based in overtime. Again, that's related to the street department's budget, which is funded by the management. But. And then for an aesthetic look, filling in the gaps of the overhead overheads around the main corridor in the town. With this American Revolution fixture that we use, Wellington Edgewood, Holly Hills, some of the other subdivisions in town. It's a nice looking light.
Jeff, I have the picture. If you're riding out, starting to jump, if you look up on your left, you have calls and you have lights, the old traditional lights, and you would replace a series of lights going out on the left with the LED, modern Slimline Cobra.
Right.
On the right-hand side, looking out, you would see the coast light, like you see in other neighborhoods. And in Maple Hill also, near Alum Authority.
Interlaced between the Cobra.
But on the right-hand side, you would see a series of these coast lights instead of the wooden poles, and that would draw your eye to make it look attractive. Instead of looking to the left, you're looking to the right, and you get light from interspersed lights. And then fill the rest of the neighborhood with the same coast light. Nice, neat.
I have not proposed any coast lighting within the neighborhood.
No. What are you gonna do? Were there calls?
Yeah, just put the standard. Cobra, like on curves. The pine, the. Pine filled.
You're just gonna put the big overhead, the LED lights, which produce a lot of light, cheap price. Jeff's got that, just about worked out what he's gonna do, and when he does it, I'll bring it back to the Street Roads Committee and let you all look at it.
How many further funding for the general budget? Not much more you can be able to apply, and this will still drain the street department's lighting budget for a couple of years over time before we get this phased in. The way it works, you have to pay the bill, some utilities aren't unlimited in their ability to prop up everything. In fact, there's a case to be made, back to the point before, I'm spilling out of this debate, that we could show everybody in the health communities how much we could lower their electric rate if we stopped tapping utility funds off. That's my answer.
That's on the lighting. Then we went on to, Ben devised that the new truck is on its way, the new front-end loader. Garage trucks were in transition here, going to a front-end loader systems, and the new dumpsters already been delivered partially, so they'll start seeing a new type of garage truck in town. Hopefully, we'll continue to upgrade to the newer, modern stuff. And the grappling truck, bids are being taken now for it. That'll be finished out next Thursday. That'll be picking up the bulky items and so forth, and we were having an update on the ordinances on the bulky already picked up. And overall, a waste management amendment that's gonna be brought forward to council for approval. I would say in SOX, they also had sidewalk ordinances. There's been work on time to clarify who takes care of the sidewalks and whose responsibility for the sidewalks and so forth are being. Larry's working on the update on that, and new orders will be coming forth on that. And then, like I said, the new amendments for the solid waste management ordinances. This is the weights, what's gonna be allowed to be put out, what won't be picked up, what will be picked up. It's a clarification for the public to know what they're getting for the money.
Any response, councilmembers? Any questions? Okay, on that, the announcement, there'll be a cemetery committee meeting tomorrow, eight twelve, two thousand and fifteen, eight thirty a.m. in the mayor's conference room. Number ten, any unfinished business? New business? So let's get down to number twelve and do the city council members' comments, and we'll do, A, the Congressional Black Caucus Foundation Annual Legislative Conference, Washington, DC, September sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen. Councilman Copeland, you have the floor.
I was going to bring this up, but I've decided to not bring it up. There is one happening, September sixteenth through the twentieth. I will be attending that conference, but I will not be asking for sponsorship because I wasn't given sponsorship for the Kentucky Black Caucus. So this is the Congressional Black Caucus, and it's in Washington, DC. So I have decided not to go and ask for sponsorship to go to this conference. So, thank you.
Just real quick, this is the mayor is absent. Councilman Buckman would like to present the contribution Maple Hill Neighborhood Active Watch signs. Councilman Buckman?
They asked me to bring forth to the council the purchase of the signs of the Neighborhood Watch for Maple Hill Active Watch. Teresa gave a preview of it on the streets that they'll put the signs up. I haven't attended any of their meetings, but I think that's a small amount of money to show our support for a neighborhood that's trying to do the right thing and make it better and clean it up. And Neighborhood Watches, from a police officer viewpoint, if you've got more eyes out there on the street, then these people are gonna take the initiative to make it work. It's a small price to pay to show them that we're supporting them, and that it's a good thing, maybe some of the other neighborhoods will take the initiative and do the same thing. So I need to put a motion.
Well, I need to know how many signs and the cost again, Teresa.
There's eight. There's eight signs, and I have the streets listed. And I can send you an email of that.
I've got it. That's fine. That's the three hundred and twenty-sixth. The reason you need to bring it up, Councilman Buckman, is because you all decided at the beginning of the year that any funds brought out of contingency funds would go before the council for a vote. So you're gonna need to make that motion.
I'll make a motion up to the floor to. To support the Neighborhood Watch sign program for the amount of three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Yes.
Of course, from the contingency.
Is that a subsidy?
Yes.
And also on the labor to, for the city to install it.
There's a second. Councilman Copeland, discussion.
Everybody knows my opinion on contingency fund. I don't know who is on this.
So we have, we have all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Close or oppose? As have it? That's the first for Fred, and the history board. Number thirteen, cemetery deeds. If there's no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the cemetery deeds for Wanda and Francis Coon Jr., Carol Bunch, and Sadie Jackson. Since there's no objections, the motion to adopt cemetery deeds is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. Please check that out. The announcements to the. The A is which Glenn Wheatley, the police department, is fifteen years with the city police department. Mackenzie Maddely, police department, five years. Tell them I appreciate their service. And number fifteen, the adjournment. If there's no objections, I'll adopt a motion to adjourn. Since there's no objections, we'll adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys.